We clean them every Friday. During my bathrooms and my horses. It's it's really.
This this thing just.
Right.
Now.
Person.
Yeah.
Yeah. A little.
I do that works. By. Just about work. Before you charge.
And bad being closed better than that much to do. Do a lot of talk to Renee. And before the city had baked somebody overtime to keep the bathroom cleaning well like this. At the fourth of July there. So nice to just get important bodies in there and keep them bathrooms closed.
They hardly ever open them, they're probably gone.
How from their morning?
I know regardless, we keep calling each other.
When we go and uh cops close them at nine o'clock or one o'clock or. If they're not busy doing something happen. Sometimes they get close, sometimes they don't.
I'll make a motion if we can keep this contract for another year.
Yes. Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter, Kenny Chris?
Yeah. Just the contract on the pool. Yeah. Pool, yes.
Yes, Danny?
Yes.
Well, we are at the fire report.
Um, if you guys don't think this is a lot of trouble, um, go down there. John's up here, put one, um, basically with two little bit of differences. Uh, and he's a hundred thousand dollar lot, two of them, there's not a whole lot of just similarities to him. We're gonna steal around. Around. A buddy present for one by the time do some upgrades to it and finish out.
What do you think we can get for the old truck? So. Not much. Realistic.
If we can get twenty thousand out of it, I'll be extremely surprised.
Okay.
Um, I pretty well told everybody just quit using it once this absolutely have to. Um, it's about to make this through. I felt off, um, we're kind of pretty close to stopping there. Much running this up.
So what year is this truck?
Two oh so.
And what year is that?
Eighty nine.
Yeah, that's seven years old. Oh, oh, that's seven years.
Come from Sean, history.
It comes from Odessa, Texas, um, southern chart happens. The one actually sits on the north side of Houston, so it ended up going through Hurricane Harvey. Uh, response to it, which makes me a little bit nervous, I've seen it from it. Um, as far as I know, they fix everything. It's got a system on there, as they call it, it's a form of bomb system, and that's real especially on.
Are are you more comfortable buying from John's in Rogersville than you would be from at?
I would, um, I mean, if there's something wrong with it, yeah. Yeah, if there's something wrong with it.
Closer than Texas.
Um.
Closer than Texas.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
The one in Texas is better than it is.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's it's a B or, yeah, you know. Um, so the fire department, that's a brand new truck. It's a yellow man on trade. And then, so there should be.
John, can I?
That's how I'm trying to talk about it. They don't matter, I don't mess with it. It's a day, it's a day, don't mess with it. There's only there, there's not much, so don't. Um, to me, it's easier to try to do a little bit of get out of the deal. Because this is probably about the easiest, you got three to get rid of.
So our truck, you said, and just wore out, except for the red one, we got the last. Except for.
The ladder, um, it's got some green ones, there's some large blue green ones running around with just expensive effects.
Well, how how's the knee very often?
Quite a bit, yeah, uh, I bought it, I didn't, it was often, um, came to find out, we ended up using it more than we did the other truck.
I I asked David Smith, I mean, you trust David Smith's judgment, I'm sure.
With his fire department, not so much mine.
But, I mean, he's a pro of your traps.
Okay.
Essentially, I I asked David, I said, you know, do we, you think that Seymour? Fire department needs this. He was he was positive about the need for ladder truck, one for each truck, right? He said. A benefit.
We're gonna end up having to have it for two.
And he said that we should have an incident on the square. Being essential to have a ladder truck. Even think of fighting the fire.
Not once.
How many fires have you hit around?
Well, I mean.
Forever or?
I wanted to make.
Yeah, just, you know. Over three years. Over six, five, ten years.
Uh, it was speedy when I first heard the black gavel. I don't know if we've been to, I guess, small.
We have one of theirs that has been taken there about, uh, a forty shop there. They burn it all.
Yeah. I've had several small ones, um, Gru is a prime example.
Yeah.
They're basically the exact same as us, and they probably have about half this worth.
I remember that.
Did that ladder truck?
They had their example, one of them was a long enough.
And how long was this here?
One hundred.
How big was, how big was ours?
Where do you set that thing up, get set up in the middle, or you've got thirty business that's set back to to the building or whatever it is, when you die there, before you ever get to the building?
This, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That would, um, in the end, that's what happens.
This would come from the, uh, fire budgets?
Yeah, uh, so thanks.
So it takes seven years, I guess, for it?
Uh, it's within our hours, so, yeah. Um, seven years.
I think that's a good plan, but since we're in the house, uh, and it's.
Yeah. Um. Originally, I was gonna look and try to take it out, five, four thousand on it, I left a hundred. And after just some of that, much more.
What's left today?
David, you said, you never prefer keeping your money there, Sean. Which is. You know, you never know what will come out. You might, oh, I will pull up. I mean. Look back, we got, we just did a, it might be, we got.
Okay.
Negative three to C P.
I can keep on spinning.
More than two percent. And the pun is U S C, right?
Yes.
Good in the math.
Oh, yeah, no, I get it, yeah. With the announce.
Yeah.
You have, David said, you have to do some, how's the player?
Um, yeah, on the back ones, uh, they're made less money, so.
Just a lifespan on this, realistically, by this truck, how long's the last?
I think we could for ten years.
Okay. So it's not gonna be obsolete for you.
How old is our present? When did we get it?
Eighty nine. Thirty years on.
Did we get it maybe not?
No, we got it, um.
Two thousand and four.
Is on.
It was.
It's one, ten?
No, within nine years or sooner.
Nine, eight.
Yeah, it was very about.
I started here in oh seven, um, we bought that first property, and so we bought it. October for two thousand and seven, um, the gal.
Yeah.
This is what we're, this is what we've got, that sales tax for first Sean. Uh, finding one, I actually told him we had one.
Yeah.
Um. And and the one that you have now, Sean, I mean, it it's really unfit for service on.
That's why I wasn't out of four K O high.
Um. Put money in it to make it functional.
Yes.
And then we'd still have the thirty.
Yes.
If you bought this one and used its name to done one, would you be used, when could you?
I guess somewhere between thirty and sixty, I were giving them, go ahead, give them a sign, I could come pretty quick after that.
Place of the job, right?
Yeah.
Makes more sense.
Obviously, it's two ninety five thousand dollars for, basically the same.
Sam for cat having, paying the funds.
So, I get it.
Okay. Uh, Sam, were you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I am.
You're not saying, I like when you talk.
It's a, it's a, it's a tax item, I mean, it falls in the what was passed. Uh, we have a ladder truck that's basically useless, I mean, the town kind of needs their pay. Needs for their highest over ratings and there's something going on, so we'd be a good deal on my local, I think. So, where's your, use that, tax for that?
So who yourself around the center best?
Um. A lot of, yeah, um, this is the best one. They don't look at it so far. The other one was those green trucks, um, and I guess a little bit more.
And what would you say this actually come from?
Odessa, Texas. That's.
Drive.
Yeah.
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 And they should come up to you, right?
He bought it off online, auction jumping, uh, so the city hasn't served up a long line. So it's way that.
Something in, what other reason was that?
I don't know, not from the way it sounds down there.
Okay, that's a Texas, I get about two inches right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Texas. Motion that we allow you to use your fire tat or your, yeah, your fire tax funds, and go ahead and have, like Sam looked at the details, and make a motion and invite, let you fight truck.
So where are you gonna try to sell us the line or?
We'll probably start getting all of it.
We do have an account, so.
We have the amount of users, but I'm extremely concerned, that's our problem.
People will help us.
Yeah.
You don't like the, in the fifth, probably he's like, I don't know, was that what he said?
Uh, it's possible, I don't know exactly where they're putting, and then it just be the matter of going through, pressing for that deal. There may be some local people, um, but at the time, good deal was extremely easy. We can put it out for a local posting, if that's what you wanna do, and if you don't find, um, suppose we turn it into. You deny it.
Yeah.
But, I don't know, remind me, when it's time, I'm at an auction, I have a little fire truck. Set a fire truck up for sale. All I thought, not.
Foundation?
It was the foundation, uh, yeah. Anyway, he buys this thing for a couple thousand dollars. And, uh, everybody, you know, they can buy it because it was just jumping down the track. He had to find it in some rural district, like a two cap, like an order of us. His mom, he's up there, you know.
When my dad, he took the land. I was telling him about a thousand dollars, they go about Ohio, not that hard for that.
Mike, we've got a motion on that. We got a second.
Sure.
Who's that real talk from that?
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Mary Carpenter, Kenny Chris, Danny.
Yes.
The second part of this that I had here was training, training grounds, it's mapped here, um, what's box is a piece of land that the city already owns, right there to the north. Superpland Valley, around six middle of it. For me, I just don't really know of anything else that the city would benefit with it, um, so trying to build some training grounds out there, um, is what I was looking at, doesn't make that land, it's for that anyways.
How much land does that mean?
Oh, from looking, yeah, that looks like about three acres.
I think it's more than that, I was, I was thinking, it's, where's the available, uh, it's about ten acres right there.
Oh, it's ten acres. No way.
Better than that.
It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a. Yeah. Here, here's where, where, I, I'll just, I shake up on it, Sean. Uh, that land, I think it has some development potential. And right now, we're kind of looking at recouping some land purchases for selling some of the land. I don't know, we've made a decision on that, but that's kind of a piece, personally, I'd like to keep it in our back pocket, but, um, that's that idea. I think that land's worth ten to twelve thousand acres. If we go ahead and mention.
A hundred lines going to the third place, I think you've got four lines going through it, thirty to three sixes eyes.
And bright tonight for us to start looking, but I'm actively looking for a place for Sean to start to, this is about numerous times before, any of the city.
There are no places.
Answer, what will it cost the city, because we we can't use your tax money for this?
You can't use it to fund operations, but you could certainly use it for, uh, equipment, things that you'll need there.
Well, oh, yeah, yeah, I I'm just talking about the cost of running the training facility, I mean, do you think it's, uh, is there any way, looking at a training facility that could monetize it to make a case of itself?
I'll be as far away as Springfield.
Um, you don't think any rural departments would be interested?
Well, um, I think we don't want to do some shopping, I share with with Sutter, might be a possibility, um, I don't know where finances are, though, this is my own thing. Um.
So what do you, what would you estimate the cost of operating a training facility?
I think once you add it up and go, it becomes pretty minor. Um, or just two utilities can go on that, but, um, it's kind of what I was looking at, where you can grow any routes. Um, to reduce some of the burn time, to reduce some of the time that you're actually on, and around there within there. Um, so the cost of propane a few times a year, I mean, it's pretty minimal overall, once it's built, it's pretty, um, and that's what that tax is actually for, is to build, to build the building there, to build, um, the bargain.
Well, it's, isn't this to have great, like, something like that?
I go up there, toward my side of it, um, but doing the propane, you know.
In a person in the middle of town, you prefer to have one properly, ideally, so you can find the place.
Yeah, I don't know anymore, um, our battlefield, um, Springfield's is the battlefield, um, seeing it basically, battlefield and Kansas Expressway, um, drop on, I guess, drop, this is out there for. Um.
Got a mission.
Thirty two acres, I think, is what you're, that's the spaceship, that's the, from City Highway. City on those.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know, that's a spot around there.
That, that sounds a lot.
Like, I'm down.
This is me, me being a total liar, I just, I, we committed some money on this piece of land.
Well, um, I mean, my, my vision of, of like, training building would be more of a decent skill building, with pretty little minutes. Um, so trying to build out that a little bit bigger, to where you'd have a, an actual community room or something like that, um, a good conference room here, or whatever you wanna call it, um, being able to do something like that, it's, looking at the law enforcement side of it, I don't know what they have, what they do for trainings and, um.
About two acres of town might be a better spot.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that's what I have to go back and and look at, um, I also regard this to have so many acres, I can't even remember what that number is, but I'll pop mine, I feel like I always mind. I just don't have it on the phone, man, I did it for a long time.
Well. We just bought you three hundred and five thousand dollar truck, and we wait on this for a while, on hundred. We made you wait for a year on the training ground, fifty, eighty, ninety, a month or so.
Yes, yeah, that's our problem, I was, just trying to keep moving all through the year.
What's your take on this, anybody else? On training?
That was, that's whenever sales tax was back, was fast, and I'm not saying that we have to use it, but I think we need to start finding John, place to start this.
I think some of the local folks, but they're hard, hard to be using, I mean, they can't move houses anymore down, it'd be a good job, screening for them.
I think they'll use it, they still think it's money making venture, it's head out. Um. The officer, or the officer, will pay their, their share, whatever they use and consume.
I'd just like to see what the land options we have available.
But that's fine, um, I was brought up on the floor, which is not that ever, from there, I just, but I was trying to find something we already own.
You want to understand?
Extremely bad. Um, I don't know what the, that side out there, or how hard getting utilities back into it would be, um, where the dump is. I wanna keep it away from everybody as much as possible, just because, just to not be anything. Um, did you have other options?
I was trying to now.
We don't.
No, we don't.
Go to other cities and do it, or something. We had a couple of times, um, but by the time you load people up, and you load a truck up, and you drive, it becomes expensive, and an extremely long day for a bunch of people around getting paid to do it. So it's a little undone, I mean, it is, we still do trainings, we just don't do live events, and then trying to build out towers and stuff like that. We go out to park the whole hand lines and, um, make, do with what we have, but it's not, as reflected in our, in our evaluation, our cell evaluation, it's reflected in there, saying that we don't.
I just wanna make sure we don't create another one, you know, I mean, I'd like to look at it over five years and just see what you would check the cost versus us going somewhere else and getting the training, I mean, I'd like to see those numbers. I don't think so.
I don't think you can put a number to it, because then you, so we, if we remove all of our people from here and send them out of town, then who's gonna be here, is a problem at that point. We already have a big enough problem with that. Does that make sense, I mean?
Yeah, that does.
Because then I can take all your resources, throw them in a different city, and there's nobody back to fill.
But I, I, I have a standard, Sam's one, and, and you can, these things, they're gonna die real quick.
Oh, what, good.
You know, that often, uh, training facilities become.
The game.
Yeah.
That's why I think, I mean, just a little better answer about what revenue will be coming into it, if if it be in the long run.
I wouldn't worry, yes, as a, as a, as a money making venture through the training grounds, it generating revenue. Definitely, no, that's not my fault, that's not, that's our fault.
Well, and I I understand that from the city, but I have to think about our finances and trying to, just to keep things in the right perspective and spending money in the right place, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm boring.
Yes. Um.
We end up, these things, we put money in.
But that, it's going back to the origination of the tax, I mean, that was, that was part of the, doing a sales tax with other sons, uh. Um, as opposed to doing a bond or doing a sales tax with the sons, uh, is still, was sustainable, well, and that's, that was the, the original vision I had.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm boring, yeah.
What we can do. Anyways. Thank you. Hope you, you're okay. It seems to be fine. It's mine there. Yeah. Let's see if you can. Yeah. I could buy her, uh, I, I try to pay attention. Yeah, I'll find it.
Okay, let's move on to Mitch. He has a contractor out there on that water line, sewer line and, uh, running itself, doing several houses. And they're working on the Taco Bell and that electrical line up, sign highway and, and of course you put in four, four. And then John on Twitter on fitness services. Any questions to him?
It looks like that we're staying on schedule on that Taco Bell property, is it?
I get a lot of parts we need in. For D B A M operations, so I mean, you know, the other contractors, or contractors coming down that toll line. It may be, you know, nine days before we get the tolls out there. But the rent to open up, and I mean, yeah. For him to be operating. I mean, if you, if you find that.
Does it look like anything else is happening out there other than the Taco Bell?
There's no O'Reilly's, I heard that, but that's not going to happen.
I know. I know, there was supposed to be two more, uh, places.
Unless my toes.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you're seeing any signs of two more places.
He did business, there's going to be something else. It's down there about where the Hattler down, Hattler. But I don't know. There's going to be some kind of, I don't know, be two more, two more businesses supposed to be in there. Everybody wanted to incentivize a party, we're going to come, we can.
Right, that, that, that's kind of what I'm applying, I'm just.
So, I mean, he's telling where you want, you know, that thing to be, so. He didn't say what. Bennett?
Yeah.
You're off, shut up.
You all should have got copies of my report in your email. I'll keep this quick. Then on night, the big thing is the paper is done. I hope you all been out there seeing the journey and got that done last Friday night. Did a good job. Uh, we not been working on that Karen Circle ditch. We've, uh, we've helped it out. Uh, we got the weed killer in, we get that spray. Then weed killed out and then we'll do some cleaning up on that, so that's. That's progressing nice.
Did we ever get that drain, you know, well, cupboard? There's a cupboard out there and it's about that high up and the ground is about like, I mean, really have to get some water going there. Really deep to go through that tunnel. You know, I'm, I'm Karen Circle, yeah.
Yeah, they've all got washouts right there.
Yeah, big time. Can that be fixed?
Uh, we can, we can put something in there without, I mean, so much water.
Yeah. I was just curious.
We can try to dress that up, all working on it, see if it's thick, I'd say the washout back out.
How about some concrete?
Permanent, maybe we might look at. I actually talked about.
Karen Circle.
Up here at, uh, my thoroughfare where it goes.
Probably if you, if you trace that water problem. You kind of, there's your origin. And then the water problem transfers to business safety. And it transfers to West Steel Street. And if you look at the end of the line, I mean, that's going to take quite a bit of work too. Cross sixty-sixty. That, would the starting point be Karen Circle?
Not the start point, that's what I thought. What I think was down by Kelly's.
Yeah. That's what, I guess, there's no point being up until you started Kelly's.
Right.
And then start working backwards.
Last reason why we're on Karen Circle now is because we spent some time prepared to start.
Yeah.
Down there on Steel Street and that kind of blew up.
Yeah.
Almost an hour and a half, which we shouldn't have done, but.
You're still doing something.
Still doing something, correct. Uh, front ditch. Uh, I, I did inspection on one thirty-eight Main and, uh, got pictures and everything of that. That's a two-story at Clinton Lane.
Why didn't you pay the inspection check? Says old city hall's been inspected, what did you find?
At which one, Old City Hall?
Yeah.
I found, found a little bit of mold. And there's a problem and air conditioning. Their condition's been fixed. All of a sudden, we fix air conditioning, that's the problem with them.
Now, Joe, he had an shop. He's sitting on real happy, but he doesn't want to see it be. He's not asking to see it. Is all he was asking, no, he's talking. And all he was asking, he's going to bring his equipment, I mean, fix it really how he wants it. And he was wondering when he, uh, he said, that's all he would ask. If, if the ceiling, and he let him know ahead of time, could like bring the backhoe, like you'd scoop and scoop it in. You know, he's got the dirt there, but he's got no way to do that.
Well, more than he ran the perp right there, I mean, talk.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah.
But he said, he's not asking to see it, he just wants it smoother. See maybe if they bring the backhoe, some of that dirt that he's got down there.
Well, that hillside, he can mow it now. We, I said that perforator smoothed it out, it, it pulled the, pulled the rocks out, we put straw down, we seeded it.
Well, I can think of a lot of people that probably like for us to get the landscaping service.
One of the biggest issue on mowing would be how sad it is. I, 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 I feel like we've been working with the general person.
And that, the side, all the stuff that dishes only on there. Those metal box.
Where that fire plug, we can do. Yeah, I had a new service guy go and rake them up beginning of the week. And I did, he raked, he raked it into a row and we were taking back the order and picked them up.
I think really wanting to plan on his state, just buy some. Go with Kevin, that's our one best plan is quick.
Yeah, yeah, we could rather do over there. I've done, you know, very well.
I still have data.
That's all I got for that. Chuck, maybe I should wait till all of them report, but to manage to look at any of these old sidewalks and residential areas.
And residential.
Yeah, that we talked about, they're, they're rough and they just need to be tore out until we get money or whatever to replace them.
All I really looked at is this north side square, talked to Hannah to find out which one it was that she had issues with. And she told us it was this one here on the north side.
The main one that I had in mind is right across from police station. Is that, is that quarter? They go, goes up to there and the lady, the lady told me, she said, I, I, I don't want the place, just tear it out. Just tear it off to pieces and. In fire station or what police station?
Fire station. Fire station, over here, yeah. Yeah.
I'll go look at that one. Uh, yeah. Yeah, kind of petty, a corner flower shop up there.
I'm going to look at the report. Chuck, do you care? Sure. Inspected one thirty-eight eighth Main Street, heavy gold, this, what we got there?
I've got pictures later if you want to look at them. Go ahead, Chuck.
I'd like to know what.
I was surprised.
How so?
Uh, a lot, they're, they're expecting a mess and she's got a solid old house there. She just got no resources to fix it, but I mean, there's, there's no rock, no mold. Uh, just. It hasn't been leaking, so just for every home to go corner of her, uh, county corner, gang.
When you said up one. No, what, what was that address?
She had a contractor over looking at it the other day and I.
This girl I heard or somebody.
Yeah.
Stuck down, I don't know. Well, I guess it's gone.
Chuck, you got a bullet, the point in here, met with Brandon, the pals. Something was their off-road ranch, not using this for city. Twenty-three states represented the last event. Most of the business comes from the west, first, it is expensive, obviously, people are a lot of money spent. President Trump gets, they saw our stores, we went to take advantage of this. I agree.
Yes.
How are we going to do that?
Silence. We need, we need signs coming to town from east and the west. Uh, yeah, I talked to him with, with permission, use his logo anytime we want. Uh, guys, he was shocked that it'd taken us this long to approach him. Uh, but, uh, science, when you come in, you know, he's got to see, and I don't think people, that's how big his business is.
We've kept wilder home here, we're not really.
You know, his last event had twenty-three states, uh, the most he's had is thirty-two. Uh, Texas, so they're coming, they're coming from the west, they come right down sixty highway and they come right through Seymour.
I understand he has motel rockets.
Yeah, yeah.
Explain that.
He worked with a motel down here to give his people, uh, anybody that's attending his event, uh, ten percent discount. And they agreed to do it, but now they're going on. So now he's, he's removing them from his website and he, he's sending anybody that needs a motel to.
That's not good.
But we need signs coming through town because the, the people have trouble with their GPS. Uh, some people's GPS is still showing Division Street open up. We had people stacked up, you've seen these motorhomes, they're huge.
Yeah.
And we have stacked up all around West Park trying to get through town, directing them through. Uh, then on the way back through, we need signs when people come through this four-way stop. Waffle Bill and the Casey's, because if they've come west, they're coming by, they passed, they passed Hot Spot. And there's a little big rigs in there.
If you crunch down a little bit, yeah, wouldn't price stay.
Uh, it depends, I, I would stay and find out because it's, it's a portable state highway to do. But, uh, the company that we ordered signed from, they've got, they've got the poles you could put, you could put like a, with the flag, we put them up there. And they're, they're not costing at all and you can put anything you want on them. You put his logo, uh, you know, Seymour home of.
What would you do for the next meeting? Work this out for proposal. Your, your heart development resource. So develop and manage your resources here and give us a. Of, of what you think we could do. Because it's a win-win.
Actually work on TV contract. Go through.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we, we, it would be good if we could put our investments in town. To bring that track back into town.
That's, I would, there is just a bullet.
Can you do that by next meeting? I don't see, um, what highway options we have, even if it meant just prices.
Yeah, I've already got priced up, they're kind of there, yeah. And they're real expensive.
We worked on this, uh, we, we got, and you can actually get, and the, there's a lady that calls the class. And book is about just say what you can and can't do and what they cost in yards. And then as far as billboard changing, he's going to know it's for.
Very good. Be next day. All right.
Brandon, the goat, he, he said he was tempted to, when people come in down there, trade their dollars, two dollar bills. Said he would buy enough, he'd get enough back to, to do it so that the people see more of your purchase. See how much money is spent. It's basically, you know, it's two dollar bills. He said he was just very, he said, he said, I hope that they don't. Smart people have to do that.
Get it, bro.
But it won't come down.
Okay.
Thanks, Chuck.
You're welcome. Um, final point on it, Chuck, personally to the people at the motel.
No, I have not.
Is it a massacre for us? It's okay if you, Chuck, to go down and talk to them and see if we can make honor that discount.
Yeah.
Um, let them know it's in, not only their past efforts, but just not be running off of it.
Right.
Maybe you could kind of be an ambassador of that.
Sure. Everyone good froggy. Sam, I think you got something.
Yeah, I'm not only at one item, I need to drink before.
You got my butt.
No.
You're not getting all ready.
No way.
Christ Center has told us in this, uh, email, they're no longer going to be doing our mowing. So Chuck and I had already put up a plan in case that ever happened. Uh, to where we could do the mowing ourselves here in the city. And this week we have attempted to do that and, and made great progress, I, I think. I think it's looking good. And, uh, so that's what we're doing. Uh, the, the problem is that one of our conductors here, Boris is laid down, I've been to Clars and that's what we could get as a trade-in. And, uh, and so we know that, uh, it's going to take our more than about four thousand dollars to, to replace it. Twelve mowings left the rest of the year and we're bidding about three hundred and twenty dollars a week, uh, in mowing charges. So we can, I'll send without any problem, uh, just that we have.
Who are we using to?
We are a volunteer at our time, we have two partway now. And, uh, so it may need to take about it done and that's really tight, so we may need to have one more, uh, part, but anyway.
The last time, the last time someone other than a professional, it didn't look very well at all.
The, the, and we were pulling guys off jobs. Uh, our only employees that were going out there, well, that are hired then now are for just mowing.
Uh, I mean, let's just be honest about this, Christ Center, Teddy wasn't putting professionals out there, they were putting fourteen-year-old kids out there mowing that.
I came by there, one of the, that was very good. Today is the first day, it, it looked beautiful.
Yeah, I mean.
I haven't been out there, I'm just saying the past history.
Yeah, I, I know that this spring, as I have watched that being mowed, the kids I recognized from my high school basketball team were out there mowing, but they're no more for families.
So myself and the two part-time mowers today, yeah, we got it all mowed, and maybe they were, it's gonna take us a couple of cuts to kind of get it under control.
That's what I can't tell.
Two football out there, and all the flowers and stuff hadn't been removed.
Yeah. Had flowers today, we're gonna have to buy another flower or two, but that's, that's.
And, uh, you said you checked the price flowers?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you checked the price, and I don't say that before, I'm a commercial.
I don't think we, I don't know if they've got commercial.
You have commercial, Kyle, what are you doing?
Ask the grant.
Okay, we can get it right.
You got to write also, I'm sure, don't you?
So, okay, we can do that.
Okay. I didn't need to talk.
We were just kind of in the harbor to get the mowing done, and we're gonna keep it low.
One thing with the hustlers, we tried to do with John Deere, uh, a couple of years back. Uh, when we got the last hustler, we got this one. If we'd have bought a John Deere, then we'd have had all our spare parts, been interchangeable across the mowers. So we didn't replace that one with it, we got another hustler. So now, if we go with a different brand of mower, we're in the same boat, just having inventory of spare parts that we've got to keep on hand. So if we stick with the hustlers, we get another, then, uh, we'll have that interchangeability, we don't have to keep so many parts, little inventory out of the shop.
We'll, we'll get another permission from you guys, if I can get this trade for four, or under permission from you guys to do that.
But I don't think we have to make a motion on that. It's a wash to the money you're gonna spend basically.
Yeah.
All right, fine.
Well, now we got a good call.
You got, you got.
Okay, let's move to the Auburn one for the board. Hold on. Move up the mowers.
I'm moving, yeah. I know, I know, some of this. About the sidewalk, we'll go. Kim Cantrell is straight from in there. She still wants somebody to get down there and see if she can make the drainage, yeah. Down to Anderson, on entry, right, right off from first part there.
We've been over there.
You've been over there?
We're like, it's kind of a yearly deal.
She keeps telling me, nobody's gonna keep going around, I'm getting wet.
She got a, that runs out to the wet, you're round, so it's not enough. You know, they go there, it's a yearly deal, we go things to Ten Horn and everything, we've done that this year.
I'm telling her, I'm letting them.
Okay, um, what happened to our plans with the old Blackwell Music Building? Do we still have plans to do something with it?
Next to Lainey.
On the square, yeah.
You don't remember Bob?
No.
Interesting.
I have to ask, I haven't been involved with that.
Have we closed yet?
Yeah. I just, yeah, I would live it on the bank to get their paperwork back, and I'm gonna go over and get.
I know we did, we're tied up.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
We, and we talked at the last meeting, not to wait until we get a crack over something, tear down some of these properties with it, go work on it. But that's what we got.
So now it's closed, we can start proceeding at that length?
It, it's like good to see that cleaned up, but it's not only an issue. Um, Anderson at Main, hand side, there's a stop sign, there's some pretty bits there, and it looks like the pipe opened up. Of course, it's, it's been that way for a while, and it just gets worse.
My bad, so was that too bad? Yeah, that is, that's giving a bit of a problem.
And then we had a lady that comes to the senior center. She parked in front of the restaurant down there. And text came out and told her she could not park there, that she would have to move, this is a ninety-year-old woman. And she did, she did move, she did move, but that's ridiculous, ninety years old, you have a couple of signs, everything.
Wait, he, he couldn't do that? Sam, could you send them, we cannot do that?
That's all. I just, hey, I don't know how many people come in, and, and that's all.
I don't, I, I have my. No, I'll be.
I'll make a motion. Executive?
Yes.
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Her carpenter?
Yes.
Yes. You're not a attorney.
Executive. Executive.
Okay, all right. We got some stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Thank you all for coming.